At 7:41 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
No shame present.
That's Sexton Duranian present.
Veronica Cal present. Could we rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would also like to take this minute to have a moment of silence for the family of our senior center director, Karen Canfield Moore, for the death of her husband Brian this week. So if you could join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded. It should be live on Channel 9 and it will be posted on YouTube. Is there anybody else recording? Okay, thank you. Chairman's additions or deletions. I would like to add as 4.5 just a quick discussion of the ending of the emergency order. That's the Governor Baker announced and that is upcoming. It might be a little premature, but I'd like to discuss with the selectmen what it means for meetings going forward and the taping of meetings. So that would be 4.5. And that's that for that. So are there any public comments?
Hi, Ronnie, I've got one, please.
Are there any others? Okay, so Joan, go ahead.
Thank you.
Please give your name first.
Joan, Joan Savoy Adams Road. This is very short, please. I recently was in communication with the Secretary of State and they said they are showing that Townsend's official posting place for meetings is the bulletin board behind Town Hall. And we do have the option of making the official posting place the web, the webpage instead. So I'm asking the board to look into that, please. I think that's would be a little more up to date and modern.
I'll just, thank you for your comment. We'll take that into consideration. One thing, though, to consider is what happens if the website is down for the day and it is the official posting place? Do the meetings have to be canceled? And so that, that is one concern that I might have about that. And I think that's why we might have gone back to having it behind Hightown Hall because I think at one point it was the website, but I'm not sure. Thank you, Joan.
Maybe we could do both.
We'll put this on for June 8th discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, 1.5, moving on is the review and approve the meeting minutes. I believe that we didn't have any that were in the folder. So we'll look at those for June 8th. If there were any that are available to be approved. At the time that the agenda was made, there were none in the folder for consideration. All right, so that takes us to 3.1, which was our 7:35 appointment joint with the planning board to appoint Laura Schiffern as a planning board member for a term ending at town elections in April 2022. So Lance, I see you're there. Do you need to call your meeting to order?
Sure, I'd like to call a planning board meeting to order. Lance McCalli is present and Carol, if you could announce your presence.
Carol Hofstra is present.
Yep, and with that, Ronnie, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint Lori Schiffern as a planning board member for the term ending 2022.
So is there? You've made a motion, Lance?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Do we need another motion from the Board of Selectmen? So that it is a joint motion from both boards?
And Chair, I make a motion to appoint Laura Schiffern as a planning board member for a term ending at town elections in April 2022.
All right, so is there a second to the Board of Selectmen motion? Is there a second to the planning board motion?
Second.
Hey, now, this is Carol Hofstra, so I'll second for the planning board.
All right, thank you. So any discussion?
I just, I would like to say that I have worked with Lori for the past six years and I'm very glad to see that she is, she wanted to get back on the planning board and I want to thank her public for, for all of her service, but more importantly, to help the planning board out right now.
So thank you, Laura. Any other discussion? Then voting on the planning board motion. All those in favor of appointing Laura Schiffern as a planning board member through town elections in April 2022?
Oh, Shank, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right. Pass this for the Board of Selectmen. Does the planning board need to vote or have you all ready?
We've already voted, Veronica.
Okay, so then we're good for that.
Congratulations, Laura.
Thank you, Laura. All right.
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks, Laura.
Our next appointment is at 7:45 with the Water Department. And this is also a joint meeting with the Board of Water Commissioners. So Todd, do you need to?
I think I'm the only one present from my board. So I can call it to order or if we need to. But do we need to if there's not a quorum on my board present? I didn't think so. So why don't we, why don't we go ahead? If they show up, then, then I can, we'll convene our meeting. But right now I'm the only one present.
Okay, so what we wanted to talk to was planning a public education meeting with respect to the water supply in Townsend. So I guess, Todd, if you could talk a little bit about that and the need for that and maybe we can find some dates to tentatively set for an in-person meeting?
Yep, well, so, excuse me. First things first, new MCL came. They started thinking about a new MCL for a newly emerging contaminant called PFAS.
Can you, can you describe what MCL is?
Sorry, mass contamination limit.
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, it's what makes water safe or unsafe to drink to a certain degree. And there are MCLs that are secondary limits and things like that. Came about through the UCMR, which is the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule. They did some initial testing for PFAS, found it in some places, but the limits were, the detection limits of the instrumentation were a lot higher, higher. The Conservation Law Foundation filed a brief with the state and DEP took up the process of developing a mass contamination limit. The federal limit was set by EPA at 70 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS. Please don't ask me to tell you what those are because the names are about four feet long. They are two components of this group of family of chemicals called PFAS. There's somewhere on the order of 3,000 of them. A lot of communities or some states, most states took the 70 parts per trillion at the federal limit, set it at the state. Some did not, Massachusetts being one of them. I took part in the MCL process as one of the stakeholders as a water operator in the state of Massachusetts. It was very diverse. The Bureau of Standards and Research led most of it. And Mass came up with a limit of a combination of six of them. It's PFOA, PFOS, PFNA, PFHX. I'm gonna forget some of these, but there's six of them. Any combination of the six that exceeds 20 is what they set the, the MCL at. So the process was Townsend actually took preemptive or proactive stance as not, there were few communities that did, us being one of them, in that we took advantage of free testing from the state. I don't think we're actually on the schedule because of our community size to actually test until October. So we actually started the testing this summer and, well, actually no, this winter, excuse me. This stuff is in everything. And so what the process is, you do an initial sample and then if it's detected or not detected, you have to do a confirmatory sample and nothing can be done or said pretty much until that second one is done, especially if it's detected. DEP has control over what is released in the initial, initial documents. And the way it works is if you are, if you have it in your system, you have to do what's called a public education document, especially if it's over 20, the 20 parts per trillion. What that does is a single detection over the 20 does not put you in violation of the MCL. What it does is it determines where you start or where you are in the sampling program. Because our detections, we're under a monthly sampling protocol. And the MCL is based on an average of the quarter, so three samples. There's an average of three samples and they are above 20. Then you have a violation of the MCL and then you have to do a, what's called a public notification. Now, there are different tiered levels on public notifications. The most acute, the ones that are going to affect you immediately are the most dangerous or what they call tier one. And you have 24 hours. That would be like a boil, boil order notice. When you have one of those, you have 24 hours to notify the public. The MCL for PFAS is, what do they call it, tier two? So you have 30 days. And, you know, Dave informed our board that we still haven't been formally notified. So our 30-day ticker hasn't started yet. We're not going to have to do a public notification. What we're going to have to do is a public education. Dave's done a good job of starting to put some information on the website about basic information about PFAS. And I'll reiterate, the stuff is in everything. To give you an idea, the amounts we're talking about, one part per trillion is the equal to one ink drop into 20 Olympic swimming pools. And it's in almost every common day item. And in fact, we just got a bulletin that the Conservation Law Foundation has taken up an argument with Vermont because the three primary mosquito spraying repellents have anywhere from 20 to 50 billion. That's an order of magnitude greater than parts per trillion in them as that, and have been detected that way. So to give you an idea, I take the samples for the water utility I work in. So that I don't contaminate the sample that I'm taking. I cannot use personal care products before taking a sample. Now, I went out, I don't have to use shampoo, so I'm good on that. But soap, deodorant, cologne, anything of that sort. I've actually had to go out and buy homemade soaps that have no industrial components to them. I cannot use my, I cannot wear my normal work attire because it's pre-cheated. Anything that is water resistant, stain resistant, fire resistant, has it in you, in it. So, I mean, it's, it's a complicated process. It's a complicated topic to discuss. I think, I think we've started to do as best we can until we get the formal documentation back from DEP to be able to release. Our board, Chaz is our liaison. And at our meeting, we talked that once that is back from DEP, it will be sent out as a letter to each individual water taker in, for the water department. One of the things you should know is there, there, there are the one primary subgroup of concern that they are concerned about are pregnant women, breastfeeding women, children under the age of six, and anyone immunocompromised. You should take that up with your doctor. But for anyone else, if it's over 20, what they say is it's okay to consume. This is something that is bioaccumulable. To be honest with you, our waters know more safe or unsafe than it was yesterday. We just know more about it. And that's the, what everyone's trying to get out there is that, to be honest with you, most adult Americans have anywhere, I think it's, and I'm gonna maybe get the unit of measure wrong, but I think it's something on the order of five milligrams per kilogram in your blood already, if you are over the age of 30, because it literally and truly is in everything. I know of a water utility that is concerned about a dog park because now there were reports that are concentrated amounts in the fecal matter from bugs. It's come from the lining of the pet food containers. They're non-stick. Some of the local common items in your household that may or may not have this in this are non-stick pizza boxes, microwave popcorn. As I mentioned, most soaps and detergents. Anything that is simonized, you put, you know, the, the stuff on the windshield so the water doesn't stick, that comes off. What they've found is a lot of DOT spray there probably it's in the wintertime so the snow doesn't stick to it. Well, that's, that's, that's PFOA, to be honest with you. Some of the other ones, PFOA, and it's all based on carbon change. The stuff doesn't break down easily. And it's based on the carbon chains. The larger ones are eight, the smaller ones are six chains of carbon or less. There's less information on those because those are newer. PFOA and PFOS was stopped being produced, I want to say, about 20 years ago. The only problem is it's still being used and imported from other countries. And some of the smaller ones are, which, what's the word I'm looking for? Replaced the, the larger chains ones. We're not exactly sure of the toxicology on that. The other part is the lab, you know, it takes roughly two to four weeks to get results back because of lab capacity. Every state is dealing with it at different degrees. The way, you know, Dave put together a plan. We reviewed it and it was submitted to DEP. DEP is pretty much approve it. We just need to know, you know, we have an initial stage and then long-term plans. So that everyone knows the way to treat this is, right now, there are two common technologies. One is called GAC and that's granular activated carbon. It's a very specific type of carbon and it absorbs the PFAS. And then you send it out. The only problem with it is the, the, it's expensive to build and no more expensive, I guess, than any other plant. But the operational costs are a little bit more because they take the carbon out. Once it starts to break through, you have a certain amount of time to replace it. And usually you'll have, they come in vessels. And usually you'll have more than one vessel so that you either have it in tandem, which they call lead lag, or you'll have it in duplicate so that when one goes down, you can transfer it to the other one. Now, you don't necessarily get rid of the entire carbon. They take it out and they regenerate and you lose some and they put some in. And the, the, the companies that are making this stuff actually tag your GAC so you keep your own chain and stuff. But eventually it runs out and you have to dispose of it. There are only two, I think, incinerators in the country that get hot enough to actually destroy this stuff. So there are some operational inspection, operational costs involved with this. The other one is what they call ionic resins. But those are their own challenges. GAC can handle raw water a lot better with, depending on the water quality. The resins can't and it has to be almost virgin drinking water. So you would have to, and to be honest with you, at some, you know, most places are going to have some sort of pre-filter and then either the GAC or the resin because it just extends the life of it. These are all things that we have to consider and going forward. I will say that working with Dave has helped us out a lot because we're a little bit better suited. Dave brought up to call me this morning and let me know that, you know, a lot of our bonds are expiring. So, you know, even if we have to build a plant and have a bond, it doesn't necessarily mean a rate increase. The other thing is we voted, there are class action lawsuits and we actually joined it. We just have to sign the paperwork and get it back to them with Napoli Shaplick. They are, they, the leader in it. They were one of the firms that was the first in what they call a multi-district litigation on, on PFAS. And it's not going after one specific person. It's going after the, the large companies that made this. So it's not holding someone locally accountable. It's holding the makers of it and, and going forward. Additionally, I know for a fact that there's going to be a lot of state money and federal money available to do this through grants, 0% or principal only loans, things of that nature. So, you know, there's that going for us. But in the short term, there, there are some definite plans. We just need DEP's approval of it. Dave and the staff have done a great job of bringing Cross Street. They're waiting on one test. They've worked extremely hard on it, to be honest with you. We've done a lot of the stuff in-house that, stuff that we were able to do. But they're bringing Cross Street online. They're replacing, we're replacing the tubular well field at Main Street Station with a gravel pack one, which will have a better ability and volumetrically to produce so that we can, in the short term, ratchet down the well that's the problem. A lot of this is real technical. Some of the, Dave has online right now, I think it's the EPA and the DEP. Am I correct, Dave, the websites?
That's correct.
Okay. He's gonna add some others. They're really, really technical. So it's problematic in that because it is so technical to a certain degree. There are some other ones that are a little bit better that he's gonna add tomorrow. There's also some, some documents that you can look at that shows you, you know, exactly what common, other common household items have this stuff in it. The main thing is the community needs to know that the town is on it, that we have qualified people working on it, that we have a direction, that DEP is working with us and that we, we have an end in line. And I don't know, at this point, I'm rambling. I've been talking about PFAS now for two years, so my brain's a little bit fried.
I don't want to stop you, Todd, but can I ask some questions?
Oh, certainly, go right ahead.
Okay, so it's, it's PFAS has been detected, just to, just to recap. PFAS has been detected in the public water supply in Townsend.
Yes, ma'am.
So do you have a testing program? Do people who have private wells, should they be testing for this themselves?
So here's the problem with private wells or testing in a house. First of all, if you have Teflon tape or pipe group in anywhere or any sort of Teflon piping in your house, you're gonna detect PFAS because that stuff's in it. When we started testing in Chelmsford, we had to remove and create PFAS and Dave did the same in Townsend. PFAS-free sampling taps. The other part of it is you can test your private wells. I would caution people to do their research. Technically, if it's detected in your private well, your property gets classified as it has waysite. DEP mentions that, but I don't think they highlight it. I know, and that's kind of, that's caused a lot of consternation on a lot of private well owners. Do I think it's widespread in Townsend? I can't say, but I don't think so. I think we're spread out enough. It's gonna be where you get concentrated, where you have industry. You have major transportation hubs or routes. You know, it, it, it all's gonna be on where it's coming from and stuff like that.
Okay.
To be honest with you, your home septic system may be the issue. So it's, it's all in what the person feels comfortable with. What you can do in your own home. There are filters, but keep in mind, they are only rated to remove PFAS to the federal level. They are not guaranteed nor certified to reduce to the state level. And they're only good for certain, for, they've only been certified for PFOA and PFOS, not the other ones that Mass has, has regulated.
Okay.
So that, there, there are sticking points on that.
So people with private wells should educate themselves and make a decision.
Personal, personal decision, yes.
All right, so to treat it, that involves a treatment plant. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, and you named ways that the town could. So that could fund that. So that is a conversation for an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, and that's long-term planning. That's not something that's gonna happen overnight. To give you an idea how big this problem is, the vessels right now have a 26-month backlog order. So if you ordered one today, you're not gonna get it for 26 months. But there's a whole bunch of steps that need to happen before. We do have some interim steps that if DEP's approves them, we can do. That, that's, that's the good point.
And that will be in the public education paper that comes out after you hear back from DEP, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
May I say something, Veronica?
Yes, go ahead, I'll come back tomorrow.
Um, I, I just want to say that in the, the, I was in attendance to the meeting last night and the, the water department, and I have full confidence in their, their plan of action here. They want to be proactive. Our lights just went out. It's motion detected, there we go. There being.
I had you riveted, you weren't even moving.
Right, wasn't moving enough. But it's the education and being proactive in, in, in what they're doing, I think is the most important thing. The, the long-term planning, I think, is very important. I want to let Todd know that I did reach out to State Senator Cronin and I did talk with Ms. Harrington briefly. I'll be talking with her more on Thursday in regards to this. They are very aware because there are other towns that are involved in their constituency that, that basically they said that, you know, the education is the important thing. And then when we get to a point where we need to start any of the process, they said they'd be more than willing to help us out. So, you know, we, I started the ball rolling for that. So I think we're, we're, the next step will be just a public education in regards to, to exactly what this is and, and, you know, what the planning process would be.
Can I, can I also say one thing?
Go ahead, Todd.
When Dave gets some more, go to the information we have on the website. Dave's gonna put up a couple of more tomorrow and some more general information. I'm gonna caution everybody. If you go out and Google this on your own, you're gonna look like my head. It's gonna scare the hair right off you. Make sure what you're looking at is well-resourced and well-researched. There are some out there, some databases that are less than accurate. I would stick with EPA, DEP. Mass Water Works has one that Dave's gonna put up. It's called safewater.org. The other one is the ITRC, which is the Interstate Regulatory Commission, I believe. They're really good. They really update their website and things like that on a continual basis. A lot of people are gonna see the movie Dark Waters, I believe, is the movie. And this is not to downplay what happened to those people, nor the animals out there. But keep in mind, those were people in direct contact with percent level amounts of this stuff. They were unprotected, they were going in unprotected into the vats. They were making the stuff and cleaning them. They dumped the concentrated wa, waste on the dairy fields. You're talking a percent is 10,000 parts per million. We're talking parts per trillion, which are greatly, greatly lower values. What you will see in that movie is extremely, or the book, is extremely horrifying. As someone that's based in science, that someone could think that that was okay, actually disgusts me. I don't know how we got to that point. But we're left with fixing it. But the levels that we're dealing with are nowhere near, nor are the results anywhere near what you will see in those. So I just want to caution people when they look at that, just, just to put it in perspective, give us the chance to work on it. And now I'll finish up with the rest of your questions.
So Joe, do you have any questions for Todd?
No, I'm good.
No. I, I see that Jim has his hand up and then I, I have something that I want to say. So go ahead. Um, I I see that Jim has his hand up and then I I have something that I wanna say, so go ahead, Jim.
I want to echo um both Todd's and Jazz.
Can't hear you, Jim.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna echo what Todd and Chaz both said about having faith in Dave and the the department. You know, as soon as Dave got any sense about this, he was in direct communication, not only with folks at D E P, but he was speaking with me. Um, I was informing you as members of the board, but um it's it's incredible to watch competent people. Do their job, um, so I I do wanna publicly acknowledge that because um they're doing a really good job at it. One final point I wanted to to ask you about uh Dave or Todd is, is there something to also be said about the fact that? The the amount detected, which was below the federal, but above the state, was only at one of our water supply points. Which means we also then have the fact that by the time it gets to a tank, it's being mixed and further diluted. By all other water supply sources?
Yeah, no, and that's that is a a good point to make, um, and that's what's gonna give us our, one of our plans is to be able to ratchet that one back. And thank you for bringing it up, the only problem with that, the way D E P deals with the reg, because we don't have one entry point, we have multiples. Once one fails, uh uh an M C L, they determine the whole system, but you are correct. In that the system and it's not even so much at the tank, to be honest, it'll be in the distribution pipes. The the I'm not exactly sure and I probably should know, but I have enough on my noggin these days. Um, but our that what they call is um the day turnover in the tank, now our tanks are smaller than what I'm used to, so. The mixing in the tank happens, but I'm not sure. On how much that is, it's more so in the pipes and you're correct in bringing that up. So the idea.
Listening at home to understand.
You were right, and I I did.
Everything's great, the state has a different level, but even that isn't a concern as much, given the fact that we do have the blending.
Yep, nope, I agree.
So what I would like to do, if it's okay with the board, um, is and the Board of Water Commissioners, is set up a date. That we could have a meeting at Town Hall after we figure out when Town Hall would be open. Um, for people to um uh after the education, you know, the. People have time to educate themselves and lo- and the paper goes out, you've been notified by D E P. Todd and Dave to get the public education paper out, give people time to read the website. I'm sure there will be questions and it's always good to be able to ask those questions in person.
No, and and that's and that's that's been key, uh Mass Water Works did a lot of stuff on. How to communicate this and and being upfront and being in in front of people and answering their hard questions is probably one of the best way. Um, we probably should coordinate with Central Region, um, D E P's been very good about sending. A a high level usually representative to sit there and talk with the people and 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 work through their questions. So you know, it's it's so I hopefully I answered that or uh correctly, but I don't know, our board are in in that vein, what I was going to say is. Our board is a hundred percent behind that.
So maybe what we could do instead of planning it tonight is set a a joint meeting at one of the Water Commissioners meetings, maybe in June, do you guys meet monthly? Is that right?
Date did we set, Dave, where's my phone?
It's the fourth, it's the day before the um, I think it's the fourteenth.
I think you're right, Dave.
So if that if we could do a joint meeting and if that's okay with you, Joe and um Chaz, if the two of you. Um, if we could have a joint meeting and plan a a public session. For perhaps by then we will know what we're doing and maybe late June or July.
Yeah, we really can't plan anything until D E P.
Until you get that paper.
Yeah, and and that and that's the hardest part about this is the way the reg is written and what they limit you to. Their intent was to. Focus or correctly focus the message. But it really hamstrings a lot of water utilities in the way that they can do and communicate it. So.
Well, let's tentatively set that meeting for the.
I think we'll hear back from them before the fourteenth, I I'm pretty confident, Dave, you confident on that?
Yes, they already came back and asked to change a few words and I sent it back up.
Okay, so we should hear back shortly, so I I feel confident on the fourteenth and my board, I don't think I. I'll speak for my board, um. Uh, there's no problem with that and I I approve, I I support having a joint meeting on that. The only thing I ask is, we don't normally have access to the to to the TV portion of it. And maybe um my board will, I'll talk to to um Brenda and Dave. And see if we can get it set up to do something similar like this so that. It's more widely distributed afterwards potentially, or more people have, if we do it virtual or if we do it in person, however.
Okay, well, the joint meeting would be um just with the Board of Selectmen and the Water Commissioners, if Joe and Chaz, you're good with that?
Yeah. At six thirty, you said?
It's six o'clock, I think, right, Dave? It starts at six.
Because of you and uh Chris, we were gonna make it six thirty, ju- just to give you some more time to get home.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, so let's tentatively set that and um. Uh, and then we can come up with the time for a um. A public education set uh session for the town to invite people to.
Um, if I could also say in the interim, if if anybody has questions, who would they need to call?
They call, um, they can call Dave, um, they can. And if if Dave can't answer it, they can give me a call, um, Dave, Dave can send the select people to me if they if he chooses to.
Call at the Water Department.
Yeah, I I like I said, I I I'm a commissioner, but I'm also an operator in another utility. And I've been dealing with this since twenty eighteen, so. Batted my head against the wall enough on it, so I probably could communicate it.
But thank you very much for everything you're doing, Dave, thank you very much, okay?
Thank you, guys.
And thank you for meeting with us.
No, thank you for having us, I appreciate it, Jim, thank you for bringing up that point, uh I did miss that one.
You got it, thanks, Todd, thanks, Dave.
Okay, um, thank you very much, we're moving on to four point one. Review the contract signed by Board of Health for Townsend curbside pickup. Um, this came in uh la- early last week and it was in the box. Um, I don't know that it has been um scanned or that it's available to us. Um, the note that I saw from Carla, there was an email that got sent. Um, and it said, I I should bring it up, I suppose. Let me see, I put it in the box. It said that we were, it's a contract, so it they have reviewed it and signed it. And it sounds like the selectmen have to, but I have not seen it, it was in the box. But uh neither Kathy Spofford nor I um could get into the box to get it out. And uh I know it's not there now, by the end of last week, it wasn't there, however.
It is, it is scanned and it is on SharePoint.
It is, okay. And what where in SharePoint was it put, was it put in for today's meeting?
I knew you asked me that question, I looked at it on, I think, Friday.
And was it in the meeting folder for tonight?
It may have been in the mail or the course.
This is May eighteenth, so I'm looking here. There was the contract mail four point one, but I do not see the contract. I saw the mail. So the mail is here and it says, I'm leaving an original signed by the Board of Health members in your mailbox. Please let me know when the selectmen will be reviewing this and where it will be forwarded to next. Another original is being signed by Shaw's and will be returned to the board promptly. So that is as much information as I had, Jim, do you have anything more on this?
I don't, I was actually out last week, but I saw Chaz's email um asking that it get put up and. I've also seen it and I'm looking right now in SharePoint to find out, to try to track backwards and see where I saw it.
I did not see it, so uh in that case, I think what I would say is not to spend any more time on this. Jim, if you could track that down and get get it on our next meeting, so that will be June eighth. Um, if it needs to be sooner than that, um, let us know.
Madam Chair, it is in the mail.
It is in the mail under what?
I apologize, no, that's not, that's just the email.
It's the email, that is all that I ever.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so. So Jim, you'll check that out and get it in the, just put it in the folder for the next meeting. And if it needs to be signed sooner, let us know, um, because we have time to meet if we would need to. All right, four point two, review options for interim accounting support. Um, so again, Jim, this is something that I was looking for and haven't seen.
Um, well, a- again, having not been here last week, it it didn't give me the opportunity to to get any update, I did speak with. The two members, uh the two businesses that had expressed some willingness to consider it, um, one has. Declined and withdrawn, which leaves us with Kinserf. And the last communication I had was actually with Lori, our former town accountant on Friday a week ago. That she was speaking with his employee that is also transitioning out of Maynard where Lori's currently working. To try to get a sense from Lori as to what the actual scope of duties would need to be in terms of the commitment from their company. I placed a call to Eric when I got back in yesterday, um, haven't heard back as of today, but I'll I'll poke at him again tomorrow and. Try to get a writing out to the board so you have an update.
Um, would it make sense for us to put a formal request in for services to them?
Well, I I I've done that, um.
Oh, oh, there is something written that's gone out to them?
Yeah, 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 and I sent out, um, based on your vote at the meeting, probably three meetings ago now.
Right.
You you scoped out what you thought was important, so that went out in the email to all of the groups. And then that's been met with, particularly with Kinserf's group, a follow-up saying that there may be other issues that Lori would be more attuned to. And that's why they were trying to get their employee with Lori to see if there was something additional in that scope that needed to be considered.
Okay, so um. Yeah, so well, let us know where that stands then, because it would be good to have an accountant in, Jim, or uh no, Chaz or Joe, do you either have?
Well, I I I, we need somebody as soon as possible and whatever we need to do to get more word out, I did see something that was. Um, in SharePoint, was that just one person, Jim, that you were looking at or?
Depending on where you found it, th- there were originally, I think, three or four, but it it did get tuned down to just one group. Um, and that was, I believe, two meetings ago. So we we are, we are down to that now, there there's also um a possibility of a. A time share with a neighboring community, so I've reached out to. Um, some of our neighbors to see if there's the ability to to share time with their employee, just to keep us. With all the pieces moving on an interim basis until we land something more permanent.
So the the one person that we looked at, um, I'm pulling the data off the top of my head, I think it was April eleventh. It it, do we know if that individual is still interested?
Oh, that I think that was the applicant.
Yeah, that was an applicant more than.
That was an applicant.
I I was, I was thinking you were talking about the firms, no, there was one applicant that um had expressed interest and then as soon as it was known that she was in the market, her prior employer. Um, made her an offer that she couldn't refuse and she's since gone to work with another community, so that's the um. You look, you look puzzled, am I not?
Well, it's not, the one I looked at was a gentleman, it wasn't a woman, but I I'll I'll have to look at it again. I I I was hoping to get home before before the meeting, so I have all my meeting stuff.
I'll go back to the April eleventh and see uh. See what.
I didn't, I haven't seen another applicant for the position itself.
I don't believe I have either, that's why I'm gonna take a peek here.
Well, what I can do is, um, when I get back to to my notes, Jim, I can send that back over to you with a question. I it's just a question on my part because it it looked to me that it was. Um, either research on your part or a possibility that that was part of a list that of people that you were gonna reach out to.
Oh, I think Chaz, uh sorry to jump in, but I will bet any money that that's Eric Kinser, the person that um Jim is talking about.
I believe so.
I I think that might be what you're thinking.
If that is the case, I wanna know if if that person is still interested.
And that's the gentleman that I was just speaking of that has one of his employees speaking to Lori, our former town accountant. To better flesh out what the scope of work required is, in case there are things above and beyond what. The select board scoped out is what they believe the needs are. Um, I had reached out to Eric Friday before I left and again yesterday when I got back, I've not heard yet, but I will poke at him again tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, the plans for the Townsend Memorial Day celebration, uh we got an email for that. And I thought we should just uh, maybe this should have been. Put under announcements rather than otherwise.
Madam Chair, I did speak with um Ms. Tenny on this matter and and she was. Very pleased that there was going to be an announcement made by the board, so you you do have in your packet the the actual writing that she prepared under four point three.
So should I just go ahead and read this?
I think she'd love it if you did.
Okay, um, it, this is under four point three and I think I also had it under five point two point something or other, three.
Make sure that you you addressed it, yes.
Um, do you wanna read it, Chaz, as the clerk?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, in an effort to um protect the living while honoring the dead, Memorial Day twenty twenty-one observances in Townsend. Will be limited to two public memorial services, where it will be possible to adequately social distance. On Sunday, May thirtieth, local veterans groups will conduct a memorial service in the Riverside Cemetery. In West Townsend at two P M and a memorial service in the Hillside Cemetery in Townsend Center at three P M. Each memorial service will begin with the playing of the Star Spangled Banner. A proud prayer will be offered by a Townsend clergyman and a hymn will be played by a Townsend military brand band brass quintet. Bollies fired by the American Legion Post number one ninety-nine firing squad will be followed by the playing of taps. Veterans and their family members with the assistance of community volunteers will place poppy decorated Laurel Reese at the seventeen Townsend Soldiers' Memorials. The Old Burial Ground, Memorial Hall, the Civil War Monument, the V F W Park Monument. The Memorial Common Monument and the Canal and Main Street Bridges. In addition to placing an American flag at each veteran's grave in the three cemeteries prior to May thirtieth. It is unfortunate that Townsend's traditional two Memorial Day parades and the other five memorial services. Needed to be canceled again this year for the safety of all the participants and onlookers. It is sincerely hoped that all of Townsend's wonderful Memorial Day traditions can be resumed next year. All area residents are encouraged to reflect on the meaning of Memorial Day. And to especially pay tribute to those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our country. It is so very important that we not forget. And if I'm correct, I believe that um T Cam will be out with cameras. To film these and put them up on Channel Nine, I believe, so I see that Dave's on, I don't know if he's really there anymore. But is that correct, Dave?
Yes, Veronica, I'm here and we've talked to Hartley and we're trying to solidify. The arrangements uh with the plan of filming each of the two services and then posting them on Channel Nine for whoever can't attend in person.
Okay, and I I did just get the same thing from Steve, T Cam is planning to take both events and upload, so um. Everybody should know that, so. Um, anything else to be added, go ahead, Joe.
Madam Chair, I'm, I don't know the position of the board, is it something that as a board, should we attend that, both them services?
Um, I don't know if there's ever been a an official position of the board on that. I don't know if there's ever been an official position of the board on that in the past, but. I know. I will not be available to attend, but if the two of you would like to attend, that would be great. So it's up to you two.
Yeah, I will definitely be there. I will say that.
Okay. All right, so official position, I don't think there will be a vote, but I think that if you're available to attend, that would certainly be. Nice, so. All right, Jim, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say that there had been a tradition of Selectmen marching when there was a parade. I don't know again that it was ever an official policy or a vote, but that was at least the custom.
Right.
Absent the parade, I think it would be wonderful, Chaz, if you're able to attend. I know that. You know, Betty May and her crew have put a lot of thought and effort into how to make this as much as it possibly can be given where we are. So I think they'd appreciate seeing somebody from the board.
I just feel it's very important, Jim, to support our veterans. You, you both know the work that I've done with the veterans in the past. I think it's very important, but I am a son to, my dad was in Marines, my grandfather was in the Army, everybody, you know, I'm a military kind of kid. But I also feel that it's, it's good to show a united front for the town as well. You know, we're not only supporting our veterans, but we're supporting our townsfolk who did serve for our freedoms. So I'll definitely be there.
All right, great. All right, thank you. Moving on to 4.4 Review the Addendum to LED Lights Billing Agreement between Unitel and Townsend. Jim, did you get a chance to look at that?
I did. I actually spoke with John Napoli about it as well and everything looks in order. I believe it was forwarded off to the Energy Committee as well.
Okay.
I'm just trying to pull the document up.
I think the Energy Committee is meeting tomorrow, perhaps. I don't know if this is on their agenda, but.
My only question on that is the energy, as long as it didn't. Whatever the Energy Committee is, has going on, I didn't want that to disrupt or have any problems with it.
Yeah, this is actually, this was a project of the Energy Committee doing this conversion originally. So this is all good news in their eyes.
Good, okay.
Okay, so do we need a motion to sign this?
I think, Madam Chair, out of respect for the Energy Committee meeting tomorrow, perhaps.
Right.
A vote conditional upon, you know, word back from them at their meeting that, that they're okay with it as well.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I vote that we approve the addendum to the LED Lights Billing Agreement between Unitel and Townsend. Provided it was a positive vote from the Energy Committee.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, Exnderanian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, 4.5 is what we added to the revised agenda at the beginning of the meeting today. So this is regarding the governor's order. And coming back, I know that Adam had sent a, an email to all of us notifying this and letting us know that he will send something out further, but I think just to announce, we should plan that after June 15th, we are more than likely back in in-person meetings. Would you concur with that, Chaz and Joe?
I think that we should put it on the June 8th agenda to discuss.
Okay.
There, there's other information that I have a feeling is going to be out before that point as well that we can add to our discussion.
All right. So Joe, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good. That's fine.
All right.
The 8th.
June 8th agenda. Oh, and I'll just take this opportunity to say I put in SharePoint under Meetings and Agenda and Jim, I saw, saw that you added something to one of them. I can't remember which date. It was either the 15th or the 8th. But feel free to go in and add things as you see them coming up to just put them in the agenda.
The thing that I added actually came in, Madam Chair, is a request from Chaz.
Okay.
So, you know, I popped it in, I popped it in the, the next appropriate agenda.
Okay, so.
And on that point, I think it's a great idea having members just drop things into SharePoint, just with the, with the caveat that just don't offer an opinion or a thought on what you're putting in.
Exactly.
Important, you know, because that, that could then constitute a serial communication and get us into some trouble, so.
Like a word document, Jim?
Yeah, a word document that, you know, is, is from someone. An email from someone, you know, a piece of literature from some organization is fine. The, the time you'll get in some trouble is if you take and create a document yourself and say, I think for the following reasons that we should talk about this.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, I'm just saying, I want to get on this schedule and this is the topic. That's all I'd want to put on there anyway.
Perfect.
Well, what I am suggesting is even more. It means going, there's an agenda in each of those folders. So there's a June 8th agenda and there's a June 15th agenda in the SharePoint file for the meeting. Put the topic in the agenda and Jim, I edited yours, whatever you put in there and I put a 2.1 or a 3.1 or whatever it was. Just to, and then when Jim and I meet in our Thursday meeting prior to that meeting or whatever day you and I wind up meeting, we can go through and sort it out before it gets posted. But it might be easier just to, to, and if there's an attachment, like if it's Safe Routes to School and you want that on the agenda. Put Safe Routes to School under Meeting Business or wherever it goes or Work Session. And then drop the document that you got sent from Safe Route to Schools in the SharePoint folder for that meeting. That's all I ask.
I'm okay with that.
Especially for the next two weeks, so you know.
It puts a blue dot next to the change you made. That's, I've never seen that before.
Oh, yeah, it does. And it has little initials in it, so you can tell. And I also, when I go into SharePoint, I can see that you've changed it. It, there's, it's in there, you know, so I knew you dropped it in. I looked at it and I thought, perfect. Let me just put a number in there and we go from there, so. And hopefully that way we won't miss anybody's. I wanted this on the agendas.
Right.
So. All right, and we won't break open meeting laws doing it. And then all the documents will be there for us to review prior to the meeting. All right, so, so the June 8th will put on the agenda to discuss further the dropping of the emergency order, so. Or removal of the emergency order or whatever. All right. 5.1 Town Administrator Updates and Reports. I didn't itemize anything under here, Jim, because I didn't know.
Just a very brief comment. I wasn't able to be at your meeting last week, so that was the first time the board convened since town meeting. So I just want to take the opportunity to congratulate you as a board, Finance Committee, Moderator. You know, all the boards and commissions that put the work into getting the warrant together and getting that work done all year long that culminates in that one day. Just great job. I think it was a very smooth operation, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Selectmen Announcements, Updates and Reports. So I itemized a few things under here. The Japanese Knotweed on Jeff Street Lot, Townsend Senior Center property and the Squanacook River Rail Trail. I'll take this one because I'm the one that popped this one on there. So this was. This, because of the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, we were trying to find a place to put the You Are Here sign on the Jeff Street Lot. And the perfect place was right where all the Japanese knotweed is. And we're not going to put it there. We're going to put it to the left of the flowering tree instead. But there is a huge, huge, I don't know, maybe six feet by 15 feet section of Japanese knotweed growing. And it will continue to spread on that lot and it's an invasive. Then I talked to Bill Rideout at town meeting. He said that there's also Japanese knotweed that needs to be removed. Joe, I think it's behind your shop. On that section, the next section that they'll be working on, there's Japanese knotweed there that will just grow up through the the rail trail. It's on the rail trail property back behind yours, placed down there in the harbor somewhere. And that needs to be done. And then the Townsend Senior Center, there's a piece of Japanese knotwood in growing there as well. So there was a person who does eradicate it and in the email, so let me go to the email folder. In SharePoint. Should I share this or are we good? There's a person in Groton who has been removing the Japanese knotwood for the rail trail in Groton. And he is willing to do the same for Townsend. What he asks is that he be placed on the town's insurance. So I did put this in the meeting folder. Let me get there. So Japanese knotwood email and. Should I share this?
Um, I've, I've already read through, I've looked at his license, you know, he's, I, I, I agree that we need to do, we definitely need to remediate that. My, my question would be more to, I guess, the town administrator. What does that entail as far as the town is concerned? He is going to be, I would assume, like a per diem kind of person? And we just add him to our insurance?
Well, I, I did speak with Adam Costa, our town council, at the town meeting on this issue. And just, just kicking it around, you know, without much, much thought. He would have to be appointed in some capacity in order to qualify because absent that, he's an outside independent agent that would have to be insured himself. So whether it's appointed to, you know, the cemetery parks or appointed to the highway. It would have to be some official position in the town in order to have the coverage of our liability insurance. Madam Chair, did you get anything additional back from Adam on that? Because I think you may have been party to or standing by the conversation, if I recall.
I, I brought it up. We didn't really talk about it at town meeting in any depth and I have not received anything from him on that.
Okay.
So all I have is the license and the email request. He would be doing volunteer work. But what, what he was, one, Groton has put him on their insurance policy for when he does volunteer work there. So it, it would be for when he does volunteer work here. So if we need to appoint him somehow, we would need to think about that, but no, I haven't heard from that.
If it pleased the board, then I can board off the email with the licensing on it to Adam and just get his guidance on to what position or in what capacity the town would be best protected in terms of taking him upon his offer to help us.
Madam Chair.
Great to get rid of this stuff, but it's, it's also important that we make certain that we don't get ourselves in any, any liability.
I think that would be good. Excuse me, Andrea?
Perhaps too, you should check with Todd to find out the kind of pesticide he uses. If it contains the, the, you know, the things they were, was talking about tonight. If it's safe to use on the rail trail or by the water.
We could ask the water commissioners about that as well. So. All right, all right, moving on to Mass DOT Capital Investment Plan, Virtual Public Meeting. This is something from the MJTC. So let me bring that up. The MJTC is the Monmouth United Joint Transportation Commission. And I am the Board of Selectmen member on that. Beth Faxon is the Planning Board Member on that. And this was something that was brought up. I'm looking for it in SharePoint under our meeting folders. Give me a minute. But it's a, they go over the transportation plans every year and they are looking for community inputs. And so it's a meeting that I, I have to figure out a good place to publish this on the website so that people can learn about it. So let me see. I'll announce the date here as soon as I get the flyer up in front of me. For Central Mass, the date is May 27th, 2021 at 6:00 P.M. And it is a virtual public meeting. What are your transportation priorities? The Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the Mass Bay Transit Authority, so MassDOT and MBTA are currently developing a one-year maintenance of effort capital investment plan that guides how we prioritize and fund local and statewide transportation projects. Your input can inform project design and helps MassDOT understand the level of community support for proposed projects. Ensuring that MassDOT's investments align with the needs and priorities of all Massachusetts residents. So this is a public information session and you would have to register for it to get the link, I believe. The, or you can go on the mass dot website and it's there, mass.gov/cip. So that's all there is for that.
Todd has a question.
Todd has a question. Todd, go ahead.
Would this be a place to bring up, I know people in the community have brought it up numerous times, is the concern about the intersection at the Pepperell Line where the high school is that four-way intersection? Is this something where we can voice our concerns about that and see if there's something we can get done?
Yes. That would, that is a project that there, there is. If, if you bring that forward and we bring that forward with the tip people. It needs to get put on the, the MassDOT tip and right now we have nothing on the transportation improvement plan. This is a project that would go there. It, so this is a good place to bring that up.
Right, and if I, if I may, Madam Chair, the, the process really kind of starts here. This is a capital, it, it starts with the public voicing their opinion. Once the public voices their opinions, anytime that you see a public forum for any, especially in any grants that we go forward with, the public has to have input and this is how things start to happen. So if there is more than just one or two people talking about that particular intersection or other intersections or other transportation issues. This gets, this gets put on a, a, a rolling sheet that they then will start to look at these to see what they can address. And that's how they figure out how much money and what money to put into, to whatever the issue is. So I think it's important for the public to get out there and voice their opinion on these matters.
I, I would agree with that. I will also say that it, it also takes a financial investment from the community to get these things done. So there, you have to log it with MassDOT and then start working on the program. So having some, having people say things at one of these community meetings. When Beth and I meet with Brad Harris at MRPC, it adds weight to what we are saying and the importance of this. So it's, it would be a good thing.
I think, Madam Chair, that particular intersection that we're talking at Proctor in 119, though, I think that land is kind of in Groton, so I don't know.
Well. The, yes, it is in Groton, so, but Groton is part of the MRPC district. Pepperell is not.
Okay.
And, and it's kind of all three towns. Pepperell is in the Lowell District, that, I forget what it's called. But they are in a separate district, Planning Commission District or Transportation District than, than we are. But Groton is in the same, so that is a positive for getting the project going. So, and it would be a kind of a joint effort between the two towns.
And for that intersection, that's what we need is we need, we need a more collaborative effort for that.
Right.
Very bad.
So. All right, so the ABBCC update. Chaz, do you want to take over with this or do you not have these in front of you?
No, I do. My administrative assistant is doing a great job tonight.
Thanks, Chad.
The Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. The Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Advisory Regarding the Reopening of Bars, Pouring Permit in Beer Gardens. This is stating that as part of the reopening plan beginning Monday, May 29th, 2021, the following will be allowed. Bars, farmer series licenses, breweries, wineries, distilleries and manufacturers with pouring permits in beer gardens may resume operations subject to the restaurant rules, which can be found on the commission's website. They say that includes seated service only of parties up to 10 people per table, 90-minute service limit per table, and no dance floors. So the regulations were updated in regards to the governor's rule, or the governor's taking the state of emergency off.
Thank you, Chaz. Then we had two resignations that have been accepted. One is the resignation of Conservation Commissioner Dalton Wagman, and the other is the resignation of Reserve Officer Thomas Khalil Jr., who I believe has retired. So that is, do those need to be read into the record at all?
That's sufficient.
Okay.
You know, our bylaws require that they be recorded with the town clerk in order to be affected. So I think this is just an extra opportunity to get the message out and thank people for their service.
They both were there, but I would like to say Reserve Officer Thomas Khalil Jr., thank you for your service for the Police Department chair, who was a state police officer.
Thank you for your service.
All right. So we talked about appointments at our last meeting, and so we need to appointments for appointed officials, so those we need to get on the one of the June meeting agendas coming up.
We're going to do that for June 8th, I thought?
June 8th, we were going to start, yeah, so.
If I was going to add something, I know that MRPC, we need to get a representative for that as well.
That I think I have in the June 8th folder for MRPC and for, I think, MJTC appointments are both in there for for June, they're up June 30th. We have, I know I'm the MRPC rep right now, and the MJTC rep for the Board of Selectmen is also me. So, and I think I'm the MRPC liaison or some such thing. Anyway, so just take a look at that. So, yeah, that's on, I think I had it on the June 8th meeting, but take a look. It's in the folder. I just want to say that I got a note here from Roger Raposa. He says there's also a patch of Japanese knotweed at the back of Hillside Cemetery. So we can just add that to our Hillside Cemetery, I mean, to our Japanese knotweed list of eradication. So, and the importance of doing what we can to get someone to take care of that in town. So. All right, any reports from Board Liaisons, moving on to, or before we do that, any further announcements or updates or reports before we move on to liaison reports? Joe or Chaz?
I just give you a little update. Our last meeting, we talked about kind of going out and inspecting some of the buildings that we may think are an issue. Tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, I'm going to be with the fire chief, the police chief, the building inspector, and the maintenance. We're going to go and look at several of the buildings, the all the department heads will give a little update and report that I'll bring back in their recommendation as to what they feel we need to do to protect the community.
Okay, great. And that's tomorrow. So we'll have a report at our next meeting, or you'll provide an email to us. We can discuss on June 8th, okay? So I'm putting this down for June 8th. Buildings.
There was a little bit of talk, Madam Chair, as far as one of the buildings on Warren Road that is a piece of property that we own, and there's a lot of concern. The police department's been there. They've got something going on. There's people living in the building, and the police department's very concerned on that, and maybe tomorrow we may have to make some kind of a decision if it needs to be boarded up. We'll find out from Jim or whatever that they would need to do to make sure that something doesn't happen there.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further for announcements or updates or reports? Oh, I guess I could, Shared Streets and Spaces, that did go back out for bid. Jim, I successfully updated the bid on the website to put the new one in there, because the dates were different. I don't know if you noticed that. So, and the opening of the bids are June 11th, correct? So hopefully we will have something to open on for that.
Here's the hoping.
Pardon me?
I said, here's the hoping.
Yeah, okay. June 11th for Shared Streets. We did locate where we're going to put the You Are Here signs, and we also, Shared Streets and Spaces, met with the Cemetery and Parks Board regarding the wayfinding signs that we had wanted in the historic district and are now putting out, so we now have those in place for town. So it will roughly be where the Highland Street and Route 13, Brookline Street sign is on Route 13 in Highland. The wayfinding sign will be there. So. Anything on liaisons? That's all I have.
The only thing that I would Jim, did, was the library updated on what the time schedule was over there for everything that's going to be going on?
I saw an email go out last week while I was away where there was, Veronica, did you send it?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some information was provided roughly as to what the schedule looks like.
So that was the schedule for last week, I guess, and that they would not be working in the front of the building. I believe that the license that we have says that they will, they, the they will be coordinating with the senior center for the construction schedule and with the police department for anything that is required for traffic control on that, if I remember the license agreement correctly. We probably don't have that license agreement up in SharePoint, do we? Probably, I just thought of this. It was done before Chaz was on the board, and so you probably haven't seen that, Chaz, unless you made a public records request for it, but we should probably put that up on SharePoint so that there's access to it.
Well, I would like to be as, have the communication stay open. I did have a conversation with the library, the director of the library, especially with our conversations about what our COVID reopening plans are and that sort of thing. They're in the middle of their planning for their summer, so they want to be right on top of things. They've done, as far as I see, they've done a fabulous job, you know, with curbside picked up, with, you know, limiting the amount of people going into the library. They've done some fabulous work over there to accommodate. So I want to just keep them in the loop with what our plans are so that they can at least get their planning done for the summer.
It's the plans of the contractor as opposed to the plans of the town, so.
I understand that, but I'm saying for COVID is what I'm talking about as well.
Yeah. Well, so how does that get affected, I guess, by the fact that the emergency order is being removed? So, yeah, something to consider. So Jim, if you could get any further information on that, that would be great, that we can provide to the, you know, the library, senior center. I do know that the license agreement states that the that the, if there is anything that is going to be disturbing the senior center, the senior center will be involved. For the most part, the library wasn't being touched unless it's infrastructure inside the building. You know, so things like heating system or lighting, unless that's being affected. It shouldn't affect the library at all. And again, all construction is going to be off to the side. I understood that there was nothing going to be happening in front of the building, in the parking lot areas.
As long as communication is open.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, where would you like this uploaded in SharePoint? You want it in its own file?
Let me, off the top of my head, I would make it its own thing.
Okay.
Yeah, if you even want to make a folder there, Jim, and I don't know, what do you think? You probably have as good an idea as me, you know, just somewhere that it's easily accessed and seen. It shouldn't be in one of our meeting folders. It should be pretty obvious, so that we can just prove that.
Someplace and make certain that it sends a message out to you guys, so you know where it is.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else for liaisons?
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
No, no, before you do that, make a motion for 5.4.
Yep, I'll make motion to review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, Exton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes, now.
Now I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting at 9:03 PM?
Yes.
Exton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, thank you, everybody.
Enjoy your time.
Thank you, I will. Bye-bye, good night.